I'm going to call to order the meeting of the Board of Education of District 207 to order at 6:00 PM. And would you please join us in the pledge of allegiance?
Ladies and gentlemen, Susan White of the United States of America, and to the Republic of America, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Ginny, would you please take your role? Collins here, Coyle here, Iker.
Here.
Lee.
Patrice.
Here.
Yusuf Abramson.
Here.
Owen. Here. Okay, we'll start with public comments. I see that we have one so far. Just a reminder, we ask that you limit your comments to three minutes and we'll give you a little reminder. So is Jennifer Propp key? Please feel free to step up. Welcome.
Hello again. I wish I could say I was happy to be speaking with you guys here, but unfortunately, the circumstances of why I am here speaking don't really afford me to feel that way. I spent the last, three minutes of last month talking about how much of a positive impact Lisa Jacob had on me and so many other people that I know. I also touched on her long history of putting student safety first. Since speaking that day, I've had so many more people reach out to me with positive impact stories involving Lisa Jacob, not just alumni that I grew up with, but students who are currently in your school that I taught when they were children at local dance studios here in Des Moines. They're sad and they're confused. I think we all are. Today, I want to focus on something a little bit bigger. I've spoken with a few different ex-faculty members of Main Township, teachers who have worked with your district for 15, even 30 years. Can you imagine my surprise when their stories and experiences they reported to me were very similar? Reporting similarities such as years and years of positive reviews, followed by speaking out in some sort of fashion, only to be returned with years and years of bullying by grown adults that we entrust to make decisions on behalf of our children. Supposed similarities such as administrators building cases against teachers that they don't like, slandering teachers' names, and lack of support from the teachers' union, phrases being used towards faculty who speak out such as "don't poke a sleeping bear." I believe there is a lack of checks and balances that exists within this administration, and it's not a new problem that began with Lisa Jacob. It's a problem that goes back over a decade and continues to destroy the reputation of incredible educators. I could go on and on about all of the claims made on those phone calls that I had, but it would be wasting my breath, because after the last time I spoke here, I realized that none of you are actually listening to what I am telling you. I was blocked on social media by someone in this room for calling out of lack of transparency. I received an email response from someone in this room who not only wrongfully accused me of directing my frustration to the wrong people, which clearly I am here directing it to the right people, but also told me they were done discussing it. Well, I'm going to say this as clear as I can. In the words of your supposed administration, "I will continue to poke the sleeping bear until it wakes up and actually does the right thing." My son will be a freshman at Maine South starting this fall. You might be done discussing it, but I'm just getting started. See you at the next board meeting.
Thank you. Any other? Okay. If there are no others, let's move on to the update from your superintendent.
Okay, a couple of things. I don't know if you heard, but somebody here at the table tonight has a new gig. So I just want to recognize Dr. Collins, who is going to be recommended for hiring District 64 this week. We're sad to see Ben go, but he's not going to go very far. And we have a to-do list of things we'd like for you to get done there at 64, so we'll send that with you. Just a couple. I know you've got a few things, but all kidding aside, congratulations to you. It's well deserved, and we're going to miss you here, but we know you won't be far away.
Thank you very much.
All right. And then secondly, in recognition of Teacher Appreciation Week, thanking obviously all of our great teachers, and we have so many of them in this district. But we've got a really special announcement. Our Maine South speech pathologist, or one of our Maine South speech pathologists and assistant technology coordinators, Ann Jacobson, has been invited to join the White House Initiative on Advancing Educational Excellence and Economic Opportunity for Black Americans, along with the Center for Black Educator Development and the National Black Teacher Pipeline Coalition, for an in-person event at the U.S. Department of Education. This celebration of the impact of Black teachers on student success will take place at the U.S. Department of Education headquarters in Washington, D.C. next Monday, May 8. This event will honor the contributions of Black educators to student success and facilitate conversation among participating individuals, institutions, and organizations that support the development, recruitment, and retention of Black teachers. So what a wonderful, wonderful honor for our own Ann Jacobson to be a part of that.
That's it. Okay. Any updates from board members?
I would just like to say that we, I brought some signs tonight for our campaign, One Pill Can Kill, and that signs are available in the, each guardhouse at each school. And so as you'll see more and more publicity coming out on it, and Brett's going to put out stuff in the, your...
His newsletter.
What is it?
Newsletter.
Newsletter, thank you.
I'm going to start to see them around the community, too.
So you'll start seeing them, hopefully you start seeing them, and if you see one that's in bad shape, call me up and I'll go fix it. So I just wanted to, and if you'd like one, you could take that from that pile tonight. Thank you.
Terry. I have one announcement. Does anyone else have anything? Okay. I have one announcement. I just want to remind, and I think I might have mentioned this, but the foundation, a number of us went to the foundation benefit. Thank you to everyone who was able to make time for that. It was a nice event. We hope it was successful. And I know they appreciated our presence there. As you remember, we are no longer sending a liaison to their local meetings. So it was important to have that showing, show our support, and also show that we're following what they're working on and doing. A follow-up to that, they've invited us to their meeting this month, which is on May 9. It's a meeting where they're going to be able to summarize how they've done this year. Bless you. And so we are all invited to that. There's a reception afterward at the home of Catherine, I think it's Catherine Markey. And so we're invited to that as well. So I will be going. I'm going to try and drag a few, at least a few of you with me to that, so that we can honor the commitment they make and what they're doing in light of the fact that we're not able to go there every month, but we want to show our support. So if someone wants to go with me, give me a call, otherwise I'll be reaching out soon. Okay? Okay. That's all, that's all I have. And I think that's at 7:00 PM, but I'll confirm that. I'll probably send you guys a mail on it. Okay. Moving on, Policy Committee update. Ginny is not here today. Dean is going to go ahead and make that report for us.
Sure. So we met on April 17. Discussion was held on proposed revisions to the Extracurricular Code of Conduct. A committee run by building administrators, including department chairs from Fine Arts and Health and Wellness, as well as associate principals for student experiences, have met to review the current philosophy, purpose, prohibited conduct, and procedural application of the code. It was suggested that we incorporate parents into next steps for the process, and the Policy Committee will review the suggested changes in the next several weeks.
And I know that Ginny, you're going to be calling another Policy Committee meeting whenever George feels that's appropriate, because he's doing the bulk of the work on making the changes. Okay. Moving along to the Finance Committee update. Linda?
Of course. Finance Committee was held on April 17 of 2023. I was present along with Dean Patrice and Sheila Yusuf Abramson. The meeting was called to order at 5:17 PM. There were no public comments. We discussed quite a lot of things. The first thing was technology budget for '23-'24. The Assistant Superintendent for Business, who, the Assistant Chief for Curriculum and Innovation, Dr. Sean Mesmer, ran through the proposed technology budget, which was increased over the last two years' budget due to additional expenditures for Internet firewalls, network switching equipment. These purchases qualify for the federal E-rate reimbursement program, which is going to save the district about $500,000, and that was also included in the budget. This is phase one of a multi-year equipment purchase for all three schools. Next item we discussed was third quarter budget update. The district is projected to decrease the budget surplus by about $1.6 million. The projections contain variances in revenue and expenses. The corporate replacement taxes are trending about $8.5 million over the majority, which will fund capital projects for future construction. The next item was investment volatility report. This report compares the carrying to market value of our investment portfolio based on the rise and fall of interest rates. The market-to-value adjustment is down from December and is predicted to continue to improve. This is just a paper loss that is booked once a year during the audit, and it's important to note that the district holds all of its investments to ensure. We discussed athletic trainers, and the district recommends hiring one assistant athletic trainer at East and one at West instead of awarding the RFP to Athletico, because Athletico has had difficulty providing services because of the training shortage. The net change is $105,000. There was no board action required, as these hires were presented and are included in the potential new F-24 '23-'24 year. Another item we discussed was Maine South spec gym floor. We only received one respondent at the bid opening, so the administration recommends rejecting the bid with keeper flooring and re- issuing a new bid. Second bid was opened on April 11. Two of the respondents, or the two respondents, Floris Inc., was the lowest responsive bidder, and the district recommends awarding the bid to Floris Inc. the amount of $160,800. Finally, the Special Education Transportation was discussed. The district received two bids for providing services to our schools, and ISBE approved schools per a student's ID P. Of the two bids received, the district recommends awarding the three-year contract to Safeway at the proposed cost of $4,519,310.46. However, that's contingent upon receiving the insurance certificate by our risk manager, and hopefully that did occur. Good. There's no further business, and the meeting was adjourned at 6:00 PM.
Okay. Thank you, Linda. Okay. Moving along to the construction update.
In your packet is the April construction update. At East, we continue to work on the pool, and we'll do so through the month of June, as well as they've started to do some work in both the attic and third floor of the middle portion of the classrooms on powder, which will get completely renovated this summer. I think we're gearing up, so May becomes the launch of summer construction as we start to put the plans in motion and then take it to full gear at the end of the month.
Okay. The next item is an official canvas of the April 4 election results. Could I have a motion on item 3?
So moved. Second.
Okay. So I'm just going to summarize here quickly. First of all, thank them for putting their names in again. The candidates were Terry Collins for the two-year position, and, wait a minute, are we all in here? Yes, we are. Okay. Sheila Yusuf Abramson, Dean Patrice, and Ed Iker for the four-year positions, and they all won with over 8,000 votes. Right? So congratulations. So would you take the role? Collins?
Aye.
Coyle?
Aye.
Iker?
Aye.
Patrice?
Aye.
Yusuf Abramson?
Aye.
Owen? Aye. Now, as it's, we technically do need to swear them in, so let's go over here and, I guess we could go on either side. Do we have to read anything? Well, I'll recite it and then you can.
Okay.
I'm breaking it down. Now, when I say swear, can swear. I state your name.
I.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will faithfully discharge the duties.
That I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the Office of Member of the Board of Education.
Of the Office of Member of the Board of Education.
Of Main Township High School, District 207.
Of Main Township High School, District 207.
In accordance with the Constitution of the United States.
In accordance with the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the laws of the State of Illinois.
And the laws of the State of Illinois.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
I further swear or affirm that.
I further swear or affirm.
I shall respect taxpayer interests.
I shall respect taxpayer interests.
By serving as a faithful protector.
By serving as a faithful protector.
Of the school district's assets.
Of the school district's assets.
I shall encourage and respect the free expression of opinion.
I shall encourage and respect the free expression of opinion.
The free expression of opinion.
Free expression of opinion.
Of my fellow board members.
Of my fellow board members.
And others.
And others.
Who seek a hearing before the board.
Who seek a hearing before the board.
While respecting the privacy of students.
While respecting the privacy of students.
And employees.
And employees.
I shall recognize that a board member.
I shall recognize that a board member.
Has no legal authority as an individual.
Has no legal authority as an individual.
And that decisions can be made.
And that decisions can be made.
Only by a majority vote at a public board meeting.
Only by a majority vote at a public board meeting.
I shall abide by majority decisions of the board.
I shall abide by majority decisions of the board.
While retaining the right to seek changes.
While retaining the right to seek changes.
In such decisions.
In such decisions.
Through ethical and constructive channels.
Through ethical and constructive channels.
As part of the Board of Education.
As part of the Board of Education.
I shall accept the responsibility for my role.
I shall accept the responsibility for my role.
In the equitable and quality education.
In the equitable and quality education.
Of every student in the school district.
Of every student in the school district.
I shall foster with the board.
I shall foster with the board.
Extensive participation of the community.
Extensive participation of the community.
Formulate goals.
Formulate goals.
Define outcomes.
Define outcomes.
And set the course for Main Township High School, District 207.
And set the course for Main Township High School, District 207.
I shall assist in establishing.
I shall assist in establishing.
A structure and an environment.
A structure and an environment.
Designed to ensure all students.
Designed to ensure all students.
Have the opportunity.
Have the opportunity.
To attain their maximum potential.
To attain their maximum potential.
Through a sound organizational framework.
Through a sound organizational framework.
I shall strive to ensure a continuous assessment.
I shall strive to ensure a continuous assessment.
Of student achievement.
Of student achievement.
And all conditions.
And all conditions.
Affecting the education of our children.
Affecting the education of our children.
In compliance with state law.
In compliance with state law.
I shall serve as education's key advocate.
I shall serve as education's key advocate.
On behalf of students.
On behalf of students.
And our community schools.
And our community schools.
To advance the vision for Main Township High School, District 207.
To advance the vision of Main Township High School, District 207.
And, last one.
And, and.
Oh, yeah.
I shall strive to work together.
I shall strive to work together.
With the district superintendent.
With the district superintendent.
To lead the school district.
To lead the school district.
Toward fulfilling the vision.
Toward fulfilling the vision.
The board has created.
The board has created.
Foster excellence for every student.
Foster excellence for every student.
In the areas of academic skills.
In the areas of academic skills.
Knowledge.
Knowledge.
Citizenship.
Citizenship.
And personal development.
And personal development.
Congratulations. Did they give you, okay, I got pictures? I did not add anything. Jenny gave it to me. Congratulations.
Congratulations. Make our president. I did.
Can we move to shorthand?
You have to memorize it next time.
Oh, there you go. That's a, yeah.
That's the only qualification.
Okay. At this time, we're going to adjourn, I think it's CNDI, which is basically Take a Recess, so that we can reorganize the school board. In connection with that, I just want to mention that I have appointed Terry Collins, who is the most senior member of, that's not a current officer of the board in Ginny's absence. So Terry will lead the election. Before we do that, I'm just going to have you call the role. Collins? Here. Coyle?
Here.
Iker?
Here.
Lee?
Here.
Patrice?
Here.
Yusuf Abramson?
Here.
Owen? Here. And also Ginny is also appointed the secretary of town. So I'm going to turn it over now to Terry.
Okay, I get to do this, right? I just, you know, die and do that, so that's my, anyway. Okay, so we'll go ahead and call for the election of the President of the Board of Education. Do we have any nominations?
I do. I nominate Carla Owen for President of the Board of Education of District 207.
Recognized. Do we have any other nominations? Okay, hearing none. We can have an election, so call the role.
Yusuf Abramson?
Aye.
Patrice?
Aye.
Iker?
Aye.
Coyle?
Aye.
Collins?
Aye.
Owen?
Aye.
Thank you.
And with that, we'll move on from my shorthand to top president of town, and I will hand that back over. I get to keep this one. Thank you, Carla.
Well, thank, thank you. Okay, we will now move on to the election of the Vice President of the Board of Education 2023-2024. Do I have any nominations for that?
I'd like to nominate Sheila Yusuf Abramson.
Okay. You don't need seconds, so. Are there any other nominations? Okay. If there are none, would you call the role? Iker?
Aye.
Collins?
Aye.
Patrice?
Aye.
Coyle?
Aye.
Collins?
Aye.
Owen?
Aye.
Okay. Monthly status of finances. Mary?
In your board packet is the March financial report. On the revenue side, you'll see that we still lag a little as property taxes continue to trickle in because of the late collection and stuff starting in December. On the expenditure side, the only funds that you'll see some anomalies with are the TORT Fund, where we've had an increase in the cost of insurance and in workers' compensation, and then health, life, safety, which is really group replacements, and timing depends on how many days of rain we get in June. So it's not that the projects are over budget, it's just that when the billing occurs, either in June or July, based on the percentage of the project that is complete. Next is the mid-year financial update, which shows that we are going to reduce the surplus by $1.6 million primarily because of the market value adjustment, which we book, which is going to be about $6 million negative on our investment portfolio. We'll see that offset by some increase in property taxes, some savings from the premium holiday and medical, a little bit of an uptick in salaries primarily with substitute teachers, and then a savings in our out-placed tuition for special education students. So this variance is less than 1% of the combined revenue expenditures, so it's kind of within the acceptable range of what we would see. And then the final report is the investment volatility report, which is a quarterly report that we track that just really shows the difference between the market and carrying value of our investments. We started this a number of years ago to kind of track where we thought it would end at the end of the year. The report also then has all of the information on the investments, their interest rates, their maturity rate, and when they were purchased. Once again, this is a paper adjustment that we are required to book once a year during the audit. We hold these investments through maturity because we do kind of a cash flow analysis on what we could have as liquid funds and what we can invest. So I will entertain any questions that anybody has on any of those reports.
Maybe just one.
No, go ahead, Dean.
Just curious on the increase in substitute costs. Is there something in particular that's driving that?
So I think we had a larger-than-normal number of leaves, particularly at some of our more expensive areas. So we had a psychologist that we had to replace, we had a department chair that we had to replace, so that drove kind of the daily cost of some of those replacements up. But then we, you know, for, it just seems, some years, we have a lot of teachers on leave for various reasons, and some years, we don't.
So Mary, relative to property taxes, when you were saying about how they trickle in, but is, you know, payments are required at a certain month.
Correct.
A certain time. But if people are going to seek relief from property taxes, like, and there's, wouldn't it, we would know that all at once, right? Or is that also like a thing that goes over six months?
No. So what, what happens is anything where, well, first of all, we get notice, notification only at the PTAB level for assessments of reductions greater than $100,000, which is about $300,000 in value.
For a single owner?
For a single property.
Or a single property, or, in. So we wouldn't, you wouldn't know, like, for, like, if 300?
Correct. We wouldn't, we wouldn't know. We, we just know those, and I think that even though property taxes were due in December, payments, we've shown year after year that they kind of trickle in over the next several months as people pay.
And the only reason I was thinking about it is because we had that glitch in December with the property taxes, and it, would it make a difference if you, if we had, like, 300 residents who all sought, you know, property tax relief, and that came in as a bolus of money, you know, or less money?
Yeah, and, and the way county works is you can appeal your taxes, but you have to pay your taxes, and then you'll be issued a refund at the point in time where a decision is, is made on your, on the relief.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions? Thank you, Mary. Instructional services, I don't see anything here. Do we have anything?
No, we put this one.
Thank you. Ken, monthly update on FOIA?
We had 13 this month, and they've either been responded to or they're in the process of being responded to.
Okay. Okay. Can I have a motion on the consent agenda, items 10A through E?
So moved.
Ginny, would you take the role? Collins?
Aye.
Iker?
Aye.
Patrice?
Aye.
Coyle?
Aye.
Yusuf Abramson?
Aye.
Owen?
Aye.
Moving along to item 11, textbook approval. Could I have a motion on item 11?
So moved.
Okay.
So this is the textbook that we've seen last month as well. It is our psychology textbook for our social sciences course. So if there's any questions that we have there.
Okay, any questions on this? Hearing none. Ginny? Yusuf Abramson?
Aye.
Iker?
Aye.
Collins?
Aye.
Coyle?
Aye.
Patrice?
Aye.
And then you'll be issued a refund at the point in time where a decision is made on your, on the relief.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions? Thank you, Mary. Instructional services, I don't see anything here. Do we have anything?
No report this month.
Thank you. Ken, monthly update on FOIA?
We had 13 this month, and they've either been responded to or they're in the process of being responded to.
Okay. Can I have a motion on the consent agenda, items 10A through E?
So moved.
Second.
Jenny, would you take the roll? Collins?
Aye.
Iker?
Aye.
Patrice?
Aye.
Coyle?
Aye.
Yusuf Abramson?
Aye.
Owen?
Aye.
Moving along to item 11, textbook approval, but I have a motion on item 11.
Second.
So this is the textbook that we've seen last month as well. It is our psychology textbook for our social sciences course. So if there's any questions, we have them.
There any questions on this? Okay. Hearing none. Jenny? Yusuf Abramson?
Aye.
Iker?
Aye.
Collins?
Aye.
Coyle?
Aye.
Patrice?
Aye.
Owen?
Aye.
Okay. Moving along to item 12, approval of business awarding contract. I have a motion on item 12A.
So moved. Second.
Okay. I know there's two people that are going to speak to this. Mary?
Yes. So the first is our small bus special education transportation. We are recommending awarding a three-year contract to Safeway. As indicated at the finance committee, we were just waiting on a certificate of insurance to be approved. We received that. It's been approved. They are, we started working with Safeway a couple of years ago to pick up some routes that couldn't be covered by Septran, our incumbent provider. So we're familiar with them. As the gentleman spoke at finance, they have, they have enough drivers to cover these routes, so we do not anticipate any disruption in services.
Kind of nice to have him here.
Yes.
Showing his face. We don't see much of that, really. Okay. Any questions on that? All right.
Except for all three?
That's number one. That's number one.
That's one. So the second one is for small vehicles, which are taxis or minivans. That is a, sometimes it is more economical to transport students with IEPs for transportation in those vehicles. We are recommending awarding a contract to American Taxi for both the regular, single, small group student transportation as the, as well as those requiring specialized equipment. Some students require a specialized harness in addition to the seatbelt. And American Taxi was the lowest responsible bidder for that as well. You can see their individual cost per ride as well as an estimate. And we do an estimate of just over $4 million for this contract during the three years. And we call it an estimate because the routes will vary as we have students move in, students move out, and students graduate. But the cost per route is what is in movement. And the final one is after doing some scope review on students requiring medical transport. And the key here is that these students are so at risk and high needs that they require a nurse to be as part of that transport. So after doing some scope review on those that provided a bid, none of them met the specifications by requiring a nurse. We are rebidding that. Contacted our incumbent provider to make sure that they are aware that we are bidding because they are currently providing the services and have nurses on staff. So this might be one where we only see one bid, but we will work with the other providers as well to see if we can't get them to complain with the stock as well.
Did the current one?
They did not bid. They missed the bid deadline. They forgot.
Well, that, that's, at least it's, there's hope.
There's hope, yeah.
Okay. Any questions on any of those items? All right. Would you take the roll on item 12A? Patrice?
Aye.
Coyle?
Aye.
Collins?
Aye.
Yusuf Abramson?
Aye.
Iker?
Aye.
Owen?
Aye.
I have a motion on item 12B, spectrum for refinishing.
So moved. Second.
So at the last board?
Yep, that's fine. Let's do B and C together.
Okay.
Go together. Let's do, can I, I'm sorry. Amend that to motion on items B and C. Could I have a motion on items B and C?
So moved.
Okay.
So at the April board meeting, there was some concern expressed about awarding contracts based on one bid. So when we, that day, we had opened and had one bid for the spectrum floor refinishing at Main South. We made a decision to reject that bid and rebid. We wanted to get it, both of them done for this timeframe so that they were done in time for summer, so that that work can be planned, materials can be ordered, and we could stay on track with the summer project. So we did rebid that work. We received two bids. We are recommending that we reject the key for one bid from the previous bid and then awarding the bid to Floris Inc. on the second bid in the amount of $160,800.
Any questions on that? Okay. Would you take the roll on items 12B and C? Coyle?
Aye.
Iker?
Aye.
Patrice?
Aye.
Yusuf Abramson?
Aye.
Collins?
Aye.
Owen?
Aye.
I have a motion on item 12D.
Second.
Okay. So Dr. Stein is a clinical psychologist that we have been with the past couple of years. He supports students who have, mainly over at Frost Academy, with complex emotional needs, and also does some family counseling through requirements in the IEP. We are proposing that to exceed $35,000. We have not done that this year. And he has provided phenomenal services. He's a great partner. He's worked in schools previously, and so it's been a very great collaborative partnership and has resulted in student growth over time, so.
And he's, he comes on premise?
So he does it either virtually, or families can meet off-site. So he doesn't come here.
Okay.
It really works with the family schedule and the students.
Okay. Great.
So do, go ahead. Do families have to pay for that, then?
No, that is funded through the district as part of their IEP. So it is when a student's needs, there are specific needs identified, and they have a component of either family expenses or some complex social emotional need that they're not able to access educational services, that's when the IEP team would determine that the student would need classroom services through Dr. Stein.
Oh, okay.
So it's a very small number of students who are served through a public day school that receives a service.
Okay, thanks. And this estimate is higher than what we've paid in the past, say?
No, it's the same. He did not increase his rates.
Is this about what we incurred last year?
Oh, I'm sorry. We incurred actually less than the $35,000. We just, do that just in case, because again, you don't know, year to year, exactly families coming in and out. And so we did $35,000 last year, but we did not spend that amount yet. And we don't foresee that for this year. And he kept his rates the same because he really appreciates the partnership. Which is highly unusual in the world of management.
In almost anything right now, yeah. Okay. If there's no other questions, would you take the roll on 12D? Iker?
Aye.
Yusuf Abramson?
Aye.
Collins?
Aye.
Patrice?
Aye.
Coyle?
Aye.
Owen?
Aye.
I have a motion on item 13, approval of technology budget.
So moved. Second.
Okay. Mary, Sean?
So as discussed at the finance committee meeting, the tech budget, there was a pretty hefty increase primarily driven by two things, the replacement of the internet firewalls and then some replacement of network switching equipment. Both of these are eligible for E-rate funding. That will offset 50% of the cost. You have a detailed list of the equipment, the components, the travel, and the software that is paid from the technology fund.
Any questions or comments? I know this was discussed at the meeting. Anything?
What's the average lifespan of the switching equipment? I think I had seen somewhere that the current switching equipment was about six or seven years old.
Yeah. We believe that the useful life is six years. We are still doing some investigations to make sure the switchgear is the route we want to go. But this is just setting the budget. So in case, you know, given the changes we have in technology, staffing, if we decide to go any different direction, this just sets the budget.
What would be a potential other option?
We might look at other components, you know, within that switchgear that we could change out. So I know that there are, there are some things that they are, they are starting to look at. This sets the budget. It doesn't necessarily set that these purchases will be in concrete.
Okay. If there's no other comments or questions, would you take the roll? Iker?
Aye.
Patrice?
Aye.
Yusuf Abramson?
Aye.
Coyle?
Aye.
Collins?
Aye.
Owen?
Aye.
I have a motion on item 14, approval of summer curriculum project.
So moved. Second.
Sean?
So this is something we bring every year at this time to inform the board of what summer work will be taking place. All of the funding for this goes directly to members of our staff who are putting together the curriculum projects, are working on some new courses. For example, you'll see competency-based education in there as well. So I know we've had some conversations about that and how we're supporting it. Part of that support comes with money for teachers to work over the summer as we continue to develop that curriculum.
Ken, what, or Sean, what is the new's weekly summer curriculum project?
So that is a new curriculum, not a, it's within an old class, but a new curriculum at Main West, moving to a magazine-style type show. So students will actually produce a weekly show. They'll cycle through the various different aspects, so, you know, directing, producing, camera work, things like that. So it's a bit of a different approach to what we've had in producing sort of the news show. So this is just a different approach we're going to try and play.
Where is that broadcast? In terms of a platform, is it?
I was going to say, I don't know if you can get to maybe the internet. I'll be honest with you, I'm not entirely sure if it posted.
I think she sends out the link for YouTube.
I can, I can follow up on that and find out.
Sounds like a really neat project.
Do they actually put one out every week? Is that what they do?
Well, not one out over the summer.
Right.
They, they, they do during the school year during advisory is when we have the four year. And I think they're just changing the format, so.
Trying to kind of, a little bit more of a, yeah, more kids involved, more of a, almost like TV station-type feel to the production, so. And I will email everyone where you can find them.
Do you get a lot of proposals during this time?
Yeah. I mean, there, we do, we do vet them, and so we aren't looking for proposals that aren't your typical thing you would do during the school year, and you're just moving it into the summer. They are usually around very specific curriculum projects because we're either revamping a course or adding a course, something like that.
Anything else? All right. There's no other comments? Jenny? Collins?
Aye.
Coyle?
Aye.
Iker?
Aye.
Patrice?
Aye.
Yusuf Abramson?
Aye.
Owen?
Aye.
I have a motion on item 15, facility fee waiver. This is.
So moved.
Fire.
Second.
So this is, my understanding, a very longstanding tradition at Main East. It took a few years off during COVID. The City of Park Ridge did host the event last year. It was very successful. Looking forward to another one this year, and our first timing meeting is tomorrow.
Okay. Any other questions on that? Okay. Would you take the roll? Yusuf Abramson?
Aye.
Patrice?
Aye.
Iker?
Aye.
Coyle?
Aye.
Collins?
Aye.
Owen?
Aye.
I have a motion on item 15B, headfirst professional sports camp.
Yeah, so they're going to run a camp and, on the softball fields. And I don't really know if the Chicago Cubs are going to be there. I'm a Sox fan anyway, truthfully, but. They're, they're, I know, it's one. They're going to waive some of the fees and donate some of the equipment, like, you know, buildings and such, so.
Yeah, and make a donation of some sort.
Yeah.
For the baseball program. I just want to, you know, reading the name kind of, you know, headfirst. All the insurance and everything, these people are all, yeah, they have to just.
We do not waive insurance. We can waive fees, but not insurance.
Right. Exactly. Okay. Just want to make sure all those dots and the I's are being, you know, dotted.